The additions were for increases based on contractual obligations and then the all dated case study. And I know that there have been tough situations years before, but I appreciate the support that the town gave us last year. This budget, you're going to see that we're asking for, what we requested was an increase of 0.84 percent. We requested $367,000. But I just wanted, our overall expenditures is an increase of 1.7 percent. And just today, they reported that, you know, the projected, the projected overall inflation for next year should rise to 2.7 percent. So I think what you're going to see in this process is that we are truly trying to be responsible in terms of our fiscal responsibility, trying to be transparent. I've heard grumblings from people that say sometimes the town manager and I are too close. I don't know how he can be, especially the culture that I think used to exist between the town and the municipal side, the school department. We truly are working together as one. We don't always agree, but I appreciate your support. And I think what you're really going to see in this budget is how we operate, how we function, because we're really shifting how we're working together. I think we exemplify that, working together with the school side and the municipal side. You can see a lot of that strategically with how we're functioning, in our, way we operate. It also is going to, what I feel as superintendent, I need to really bring back respect to education. There's a lot of negativity, there's maybe a lot of negativity nationally. We know that top-down initiatives that have been driven by the federal government, if you look at just the NAEP scores, which are the largest body of testing that's national, that looks at progress, they've been very flat from 1990 to 2014. What we're trying to do is to take that back, embrace that, look at what we can do to improve performance. You know, there was some comments recently made, you saw it in terms of the park scores. We know that we definitely need to improve, they're one measurement. But the difference is how we're using our staff, how we're using our leadership. When I say leadership, I mean from the, from the teachers, to the union, to our administrators, central office, how we're using that strategically to look at the information we have to make a difference. And so that, I want to preface that when getting to the budget. So, some of the areas we're focusing on expanding educational rigor, we're looking at enhancing student opportunities, increasing supplies and materials, necessarily implementing curriculum, provide social emotional support. We're talking, we, we're always going around talking about how we need to increase the rigor, which means we're not going to, you know, we're not going to water down our curriculum, you know, in layman's terms, we're not going to water down the expectations. What we're going to do is, we're going to make sure that all students, our struggling learners, have opportunities to access high-quality rigorous instruction. And to do that, we need to pair that with social emotional support. Objectives that we're addressing, we're going to expand our AP course offerings in educational rigor, we'll continue in our one-to-one initiative. You'll notice in the back of your packet, there is a PowerPoint that was given by Dr. Burke on the whole, on our experience with the one-to-one initiatives. And if you would like, I can have Dr. Burke come back before the council and do that presentation. Again, that was a public presentation we did, but I think it's worthwhile, it was an excellent presentation, talked about some of the challenges we faced and the growth that we've had, and talks about our next three years moving forward. We're looking at ensuring the proper maintenance and aesthetics of our facilities. We have old buildings, you just have to walk through. One of the things I want to be asking the school committee, and I'll be bringing forward hopefully to the town councils, a conversation about planning for the future. We need to take into consideration our buildings, our facilities, and how are we going to address this moving forward? And so, but in the meantime, we need to take care of what we have, and we're going to address this in the budget. We talked about increasing supplies, funding all coaching positions. We have a situation where we have positions that are, teams that are unfunded, self-funded, and we have some concerns, I have concerns around Title IX. This is a good way in terms of providing access. We're going to increase our, make sure that we fund all of the coaching positions. We still have a lot more to work around policy development, but this is going to be helpful than that. Development of administrative compensation to do policy. I think one of the things that's so important is we talk about leadership, and I can only talk for the school side, you have much more experience as the school committee does with this community. One of the things we need to really look at is, what are our expectations for administrators? And how do we compensate administrators? What is fair market value? Developing a policy that obviously has public input, but that projects what individual in a certain position, what is, what is the, how should we compensate those positions? There is no money in this budget, I need to reiterate, this is about developing a policy, looking at positions, looking at how we're going to compensate, and projecting that down the road. This is something that's going to be very transparent, it's going to be done with the work, again, the governance part of working with the school committee. I think it's crucial, but we need to be able to retain our high-quality administrators, we need to be able to attract high-quality administrators. And this is based on a rigorous evaluation system. This isn't, and I understand the automatic raise, this is about looking at, what should we expect from administrators, how should they be compensated, and moving forward. And I think that's crucial to address, I know this is dependent, it's a priority for me. Thank you. Thanks. These are objectives not addressed in this budget. Physical condition of our aging facilities, that while we're going to maintain what we have, we're not addressing. I had several people send emails today complaining about some of the things in the high schools is too high, air conditioning doesn't work, right? There was other things, we have seats that are broken. We, we do not have money in our budget to, to any adequate repair, any adequate capital budget whatsoever. This does not address the upcoming move of our facilities. I appreciate, I know Mr. Waters has identified, I believe you've identified some resources for us, but we were clear about this process, that we were not including in this process any monetary, any funds whatsoever included. Planning for the elimination of the funding formula in FY 2018, 2019. When we did our three-year projection several months ago, I think it was in October, when we had to have that brought forward, and remember, we were looking at a minimum of over $500,000 increase this year. I think, we recognize that this year we're getting $700,000 something thousand dollars, and you'll see that very shortly, it's the last year that we're getting an increase in the funding form. So they took seven years, basically the state had indicated that Coventry was underfunded based on the funding formula, and it took us seven years, it went over seven years to get us where we should be. That does not exist next year. We built this budget based on projected funding from the governor's budget. We built, again, on the projected, last year we, from what the governor gave us, the assembly passed, was a difference of $70,000 something thousand dollars. We're not including that, we put in the projected governor's budget in this. We're not planning for contract negotiations for the CTA SRT. I feel very fortunate that this only into this year's budget, they both opted zeros, because I think it allows us to have a year, to work together, to really push, move this district where we, where we need to be, and we are all in agreement, and change the culture, not only in our schools, to continue to change and improve the culture, but to change the culture in the community around education. And my goal, and I hope it's everybody's goal, is that every single individual in this community needs to see value in education. And I don't know if they do right now. And then finally, ensure adequate funding of equipment for all our educational programs. Again, one of the things that I think we do is, need to do down the road, is to get the, the town council through our school, and see the, the conditions. And I look at it solely as my responsibility to address that, but I need your support, and we need to develop a plan together. And this is going to be something that happens overnight. We're not looking for quick fixes here, we're looking to develop a budget moving forward that's sustainable. So these are objectives addressed without additional funding. So there's a lot that we're doing despite the scenario that we face ourselves in. We're focusing on branding, messaging, and marketing Coventry Public Schools. Again, I want to thank Mr. Waters, he involved us in this program with Dr. Jarrell, or he involved in with what's going on. These are the type of activities, having somebody move in to take over a vacant building that, he wants to work at the schools on STEM initiatives, supporting programs. We had, what a 15 or 20-minute conversation, walking around, but there's so many different initiatives, going to immediately bring a company in, as you know, that's going to bring in 100 high-paying jobs, and who knows what the expansion will be. But we need to brand that, right? This is about branding Coventry, we need to brand the Coventry Public Schools. When students go out of district, parents want their children go to a private school, charter school, my goal would be to make that a really tough decision, you know? I went to the Catholic high school, because that's what you did back in the seventies, I was Catholic, I went to Catholic schools. My dad was on a school committee, a regional and a local school committee. I want to make it a tough decision for parents. Increasing community involvement, we need to get everybody into our schools. We've talked about, I've talked with several council members about community education programs, I've had many community members, we've talked about it with the school committee. We want to open our schools. Right now, our attorney is at, working on the liability piece, because there's always liability, as you know, we've got to bring people into our schools. How do I do that? How do we make sure our schools are secure? How do we make sure, do we need to make sure people have background checks? Can I just allow people to have a classroom, sign up, somebody wants to teach dating, somebody wants to talk about history, forever history, we have someone who wants to do an open mic night. We need to bring people into our schools and make it accessible. Creating business school partnerships, a classic example is of what is transpiring because of Dr. Jarrell and Mr. Waters and obviously the council. We're working with, I met with Mike Savatino, I think, I was wrong, Mr. Shippley.
It's okay, sir.
I, I was saying Savatino, but the president of the International Labor Union, I met with him, he wants to partner with us in the other, each of our career tech centers, they have a curriculum that they want to pilot and create 11 and 12. And then have, potentially we'll do a 13-year apprenticeship, and then those students will be able to go into a five-year pro training program, fully funded by the union. Those are the partnerships we have elected, we need to continue that. Creating higher education school partnerships, we have a partnership with Duell England Tech. I met with the new dean of the School of Education for Ranauma College, we're trying to create a partnership here where adult learners will be able to come to our high school nights and get support, for their, you know, most of these people are working days, are going to school, and they're willing to support that. We've been looking at increasing opportunities to generate revenue. I shared with the council and I shared with our staff, many community members, the video that took, that Mr. Hobbit did, it's in China right now, the gentleman from, from the Roosevelt International Academy is there trying to recruit for Coventry Public Schools. We signed the memorandum of agreement with them. We also, you saw the video for our career tech, we recognize that we have to market. See, if we don't become the best, people are going to leave our schools, and we're still going to end up paying for them. We have to invest and strategically use those dollars.
If I could just interrupt, I, I saw it this afternoon, and it was excellent, on that career, you know, technical, the video, all the different students, and the way it was put together was, I don't know if all the other council had a chance to see that yet, but that's, that's a good, we're number one, we're number one. They said that, each student, Coventry's number one, and that was, that was a good, you know, it's a feel-good video.
Right, for sure. Right, thank you. Establishing a community education program, I talked about that before. At these schools, we, we need to be the hub of the community, I believe. We have the opportunity to do that. And these are non-initiatives, cost any money or a lot of dollars whatsoever. Increasing adult education program opportunities, right now we offer two adult ed programs. We offer a CNA program, and we offer the paratrope, which allows someone to be a teaching assistant. We need to increase those opportunities, we have, we have many talented people in the community, and these would be for a fee, but we're not, I'm not looking to do this in terms of generating revenue, I'm looking to do this as a service to the community. We have a chef Marcela that wants to do bread making, wants to teach people how to make pasta, and do several sauces, and those are one-day, one-night courses, so there's a lot of opportunity there. Seeking private foundation funds to support initiatives, we've been working with different consultants, our, through our leadership program, I've been working with an individual named Rick Schwartz, I mentioned this to several members, to our school committee, he's worked for the Ranauma Foundation for 13 years, he helped Superintendent Dacey, when he was here, receive those funds, I believe from the Gates Foundation, over a million dollars several years ago. He's working with us, helping with that messaging, and helping, hoping to bring us to foundations to, to receive money. That's not going to be for our core programs, that's going to be for the other initiatives that we need to continue to expand. And then, I think this is very important, and I stress it before, but that both unions agreed to 0% increase for FY 18. They did not have to do that. I know a lot of times, and I always say that I'm not going to negotiate publicly, but I appreciate your support, and that's part of that shift in leadership. I don't know what things were like before, I don't know the former superintendent, other than Mr. Conry, I don't know the former town manager. What I do know is what I walked into, in some of the tension, and I feel that, you know, we have great working relationships, and it doesn't mean we always agree, just like with the town managers and myself, I think that's crucial. You know, we've got to walk our talk and model that, and I feel that, I appreciate your support, because it really allows us to figure out what can we do to make a difference in kids' lives, because I don't think anybody in this room disagrees that there are things that we need to do strategically to become one of the best, if not the best, school districts in the state. So, these are staffing increases, and you'll see that we've included everything in these, salary benefits and pension. I think that's important, so that these are not just little snapshots. I think when you get into our, again, think about what we're asking for the town, so that when we talk a little bit about expenditures and revenues, there's been a lot of efficiencies that have been put in place, and I have to attribute our, our finance people, you know, Crystal O'Brien, Linda Ida here, but Tom Tomlin and Sarah Mangielli, we've looked at how we built this budget, we started with not even knowing where we're ending FY 16. We weren't sure where we were at FY 17, but we had to build the budget, and oh, by the way, we had to do it two weeks earlier than we did last year. And, you know, we, we responded to that. One of the commitments I made to Mr. Waters is, before I came aboard, there were a lot of things that related to the town and Mr. Tivo, and we made a commitment that, we are going to make sure that we give our reports, we give our financial information to the town, if not on time early, and I think we've met that, we continue to meet that. So you're going to see that we were able to, to reduce our budget from what was projected for FY 17 to an actual, and this budget's built on an actual, that's not off the done. So we, we found a lot of efficiencies, we had a school committee, but we did a lot of line item changes, a lot of transfers, but we were very comfortable where we are today, and that's why the reduction from when we were asking for our $500,000, $3,000,000 projection, to where we're at today. The first three positions are for students with disabilities, right? We've had students that require support. The second two positions, a four-hour registered nurse and three-hour classroom assistant. When I submitted the summary budget to the town manager, they weren't included. We built this budget based on what we needed at that time. There is no, somebody had asked me, one of the council members, I think it was Mr. Lozzi or I think you were talking about contingencies, but we don't, we don't have contingencies in it. If I have a student that moves in tomorrow, that requires an outer district placement, that could cost $70,000, it's not in this budget. So we built this budget based on what we need. There is no fluff in here, I think if we're truly going to be honest and transparent, you know, we didn't build a projected budget to a projected budget. We, we looked down and drilled down to what we really believe is actual, and we built our budget on, and that has not been my experience in the past, my experience has been built on what was projected last year, what we're going to project this year. The third, the fourth position, they had 10 hours per week, it's a mechanic. We have an aging fleet, and I will share that, I didn't bring it tonight, I meant to bring, we had a school committee meeting where Jason Martin reported out, we listed all the ages of our vehicles. And we have vehicles, many vehicles that are from the eighties, the nineties, early 2000s. We cannot maintain them, we have a 0.5 mechanic. And we've had conversations with, I had a conversation with Mr. McGee, I've had a conversation with the Colonel about their mechanic situation. Everybody is maxed out, so we need to maintain, most of the work is done in-house, but this is something we need to do to maintain. We talked about, despite our buildings being old, three, three elementary schools, I think that were built in the sixties, we have one elementary school that was built in the early 2000s, our high school was built in the seventies, it was additions put on. What this is going to allow us to do is to save the community, despite our buildings being old, we want them to despise us. When people come into our buildings, this is a position that'll break between the high school and the middle school, just to keep the force, we can't keep up with the traffic. This is something that we, you know, again, the plan is to bring people in. I don't want it to be the woe is me, you know, the sky is falling, I think, I don't think anybody responds well to that, that drama. What we want to do is make sure that we demonstrate that we're taking care. I think it's important to also know that, over the last 10 years, that 12 facilities' maintenance positions have been cut from the, you'd say, a year, and I have a memo, an email from 2005 that Mr. Martin shared with me, at that time, that to the high school and middle school, they had lost five positions. So we're looking to put on one position to maintain what we have. Full-time finance director, this is a, a net increase, there was dollars in the budget for consulting, and then there was also commission, and I say commission, that the former finance director, who did a phenomenal job, by the way, he's working two days a week, helped maintain and keep the budget, but to do things the way, to be extremely transparent, to report up to the school committee on a regular basis, we need a full-time finance director. So this is a net increase of, you know, once we subtract what was in the budget, and this includes salary and benefits, and we're looking at a salary range of $100,000, $100,000, $15,000, and that includes all of the benefits and the pension that we have to contribute to that. So that's an increase of $62,000. Two high school supervisory assistants, I put in between $38,000, $77,000 to $95,000, $97,000. That's the difference between two part-time assistants who just cover the lunches, to having two full-time supervisory assistants that can help support the supervision in our high school. The key of this is that, right currently, we have five administrators at the high school. We have a part-time career tech director, part-time assistant principal, and then we have the building principal and three other assistant principals. All five of those individuals supervise the lunch, and I have no problem with that, I think it's important to that. The problem is that for two, two and a half hours a day, that's what they're doing, it's great to build relationships with kids, I need them to also, we talked about, we need to improve our scores, we need to operate more strategically. What this allows us to do is to have one additional person in each cafeteria, so I can free up, we can free up a principal from each cafeteria to do that strategic work, to work with these, to work with teachers, to help use that data that we have. Right now, you know, I talked about, you know, the park scores, well, last year the park scores came out, I don't think we ever did a real formal presentation. This year, not only did we do a presentation early on, we also brought our administrators back, and our teachers, to talk about how we're using those, those scores to inform instruction, how are we going to make a difference, so that we can see that improvement. This allows us to do that. And again, I'm not saying that they're tying in to drill in the cafeterias, or at least to tie in, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that we can, we can use them, better use of the time for at least two administrators to do that strategic work. It's about leadership, everything we do is about leadership. And then the dean of students at the middle school, this is a net increase of $41,367,000. So there's some personnel movement that needs to take place, but those are personnel matters that haven't been addressed, but this will be a net increase of $41,367,000. Again, we need to focus on the social emotional piece. I talked to the Colonel, you know, people love the middle school, we do a lot of wonderful things, they're in the paper all the time. Dr. Lisi isn't here tonight, but he was getting an award at Great School Partnership, I believe in, in Hartford, Connecticut, recognized as a champion for the, for the middle school. But we definitely have issues around social emotional work, there is inconsistency in terms of sometimes how disciplined is, is delivered, how parents are contacted, no fault, we have three people, 1100 students. This will allow us, along with redeveloping, reauthorizing our discipline behavioral policy, this will allow us to be consistent, implement with fidelity, and to address, not only from a discipline perspective, but from a therapeutic perspective, and I think it's very needed at the, at the school. So this is a breakup of the requested increase of local funding revenue and expenditures. So you can see, we talked about that's going to go away, the $738,000 is going to go away next year. The Medicaid, we've increased Medicaid, we believe, by $95,209. One of the areas that we feel, that I believe that we can increase our revenue even further, depending on what happens with the federal government, is our Medicaid. We have a right to, students that have a disability, we have a right to, with parental consent, to go and apply for Medicaid reimbursement. And I look at that as my responsibility to generate as much revenue as we can. Right now, we use a private third party that does this for us, we pay approximately $50,000. We are looking currently, if we were to take that position on, we had a consultant come and look at our numbers just one day, they thought that we probably could be leading $100,000 to $200,000 of revenue on the table, because we're not building properly, or we're not maximizing. That's something that we need to look at, but I'd love to increase that line even more. Use the fund balance, that's from two years ago, the $41,000, and then the other, other, those are numerous line items, such as insurance reimbursement, so that totals $4,500. Expenditures, so I think what's important is the new positions I talked about, the total of those positions, when we look at the salary increase, the net salary increase, because of a lot of work that Sarah and Tom is on, the net salary increase is $320,556. That's our net increase, because of adjustments that have been made throughout the year. The benefits is $629,941. I would see it with Mr. Patino, when the budgets, the municipal budgets were presented, we have a lot of, if you look at just what our increases are, our healthcare, our dental, our liability insurance, et cetera, our pension, those are, those by far exceed the requests that we have. But again, I want to attribute a lot of this work is to our finance office, to Tom and Sarah, really looking at our budget, finding efficiencies, we did a lot of line item transfers, and I feel that we're being extremely transparent and cost effective in presenting this budget. Purchase services, that's an increase of $213,132, and I put a detailed presentation at the end of this on purchase services, I'm not going to go through it, but I'll entertain any questions. Our supplies, an increase of $90,000, is that going to get us what we need? No, but I think the group A shows that we do care, we want to support our teachers, want to support our principals, we put money towards that. I think our capital, a decrease in $18,323. We have very little money in capital in our budget. Dues and fees, a decrease of $697,550. Transfers, a decrease in $65,814, and that was part of that efficiencies, and making all of our line item transfers, to be able to reduce our expenditures. So a total increase is $1,163,319, which is a 1.7% increase. Again, I talked about inflation is expected to be at 2.7% next year. These apply charts that certain people like, certain individuals, so we put them in there. You can modify them, this is full projected revenue. Next slide. Again, I'm just reiterating what we talked about. Anticipated expenditures for 2017 to 2018. So this was something that I want to make sure is clear, that I presented this, but we are not eliminating special education out of district. What we've done is, there's been a reduction in the number of students who are out of district, that if a student has a disability in an individual education plan, requires an out-of-district, has a lease restricted permit, they will receive that in Coventry. But, we do have a reduction in the number of students who are out of district this year, will not be out of district next year, to the, I think approximately, a savings of $287,000. So that's why we put in the programs offset by a reduction. We do have more students going to Ponty Anse, we do have students going to charter schools, right? That's why we need to become the best. You know, parents have to know, this commissioner, and, and he does believe in school choice, we need to make it very difficult. And again, if you look at our whole budget, most of that work's going to be done with the resources we have, it's really about the leadership, about the focus. So we have three series of purchase services, a $5,300,000 series, $54,000, and $55,000 series. There's a lot in there, this is, you know, these are UCOA, so the Unified Chart of Accounts required by Department of Education, we don't make these up, but, so, that's the presentation, and I will entertain any question, hopefully you can answer them, if not, I know there's another opportunity Monday night, I'm not saying you'll have more questions for you Monday night, but just in case.
Have a question?
Sure.
Actually, a statement, I love seeing that you're adding AP courses. How many AP courses do you offer now?
So... So, I believe, so, so there's a, let me, let me try to phrase this as clear as I can. Some students take, we don't offer courses, but they're able to take the E test, right? So I believe that we offer six 18 courses now. We're going to double that, six to 12 courses. But I did see the slide, if you saw that video, Mr. Hobbit said that students take 16 18 courses. I don't know what those other courses are. I do know students are able to take the test. And I don't know, and I won't put anybody on the spot. I don't know if, Mr. Andrews or, I'll just pick a second with Mr. Andrews. If you have an idea of.
We have nine courses, right? We will have 16.
Total, what's six?
Great question.
Any other questions?
Mr. Levis, you mentioned on, as far as our request, an increase in local funding.
Yes.
On the request for Medicaid, that we felt that you might be leaving a couple hundred thousand on the table. Possible. Again, again, it's all possible. But you mentioned that it takes, you know, a parent's permission to request a Medicaid reimbursement?
So we have to, what the law says is on an annual basis, we need to get consent. And, and we have a statement, we have a document that we give and it explicitly indicates that this does not reduce their, their ability to receive Medicaid benefits. I didn't want them to think, well, say I've got a billion dollars potential. If the school accesses 200,000, that means we can only access a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
So what it basically, it allows us to access, we need to get consent. We typically do that during an IEP meeting. We'd ask the parent to give consent. So we, we do need consent on an annual basis.
Have we ever had a problem getting consent?
I can't speak for Coventry. I, you know, I was a former special ed director. I consider myself a recovering special education director. And I was in jail, but I guess it didn't go over. I guess there's no other special ed directors in the audience. I didn't have difficulty, but it was really about clarification.
Also, the information and getting the correct information to the people who's making the decision.
And sometimes people have a bad experience. People have had a bad experience. If you've ever been to an IEP meeting, you can be a parent sitting on a table with 20 different people and asking you to sign all kinds of documents. Very intimidating. And so I'm going to invite people privately to my office and have a conversation and, you know, low pressure. But it's important because as superintendent or a special ed director, it's my job to maximize revenue. Because those dollars go and help offset costs. And that's what I explain to a parent is that, you know, the federal law, for students with disabilities, it entitles them to a free, appropriate public education, right? Everybody else is entitled to a free public education. And so the more money we can access, it allows us to make that education as appropriate as possible.
Yeah, it just seems like it's a win-win situation if, but it's a matter of, again, getting the, getting the correct information to the people who are, who have to give the consent.
And making sure that, so just, I had somebody come and meet with our special ed director and look at some of our information. And just what she saw, thought that we were leaving money on the, on the table. However, I need to make sure because the last thing I'm going to do is to eliminate a program of the current vendor, hire somebody to do the work, and then find out. That's how people like me lose their jobs. But I want to make sure that we are.
What you're finding.
We want to make sure, right. But I think that's important to acknowledge that we want to present that. Schools aren't in the business of generating funds, right? Very many, many schools. We recognize that for us to do the work we need to do, we need to bring in 15 or 20% on top of the state and local monies. And we want aggressively to do that. I definitely have a plan on doing that.
Thank you.
A question on the Medicaid.
Yes.
Every student that's on an IEP or a 504, they don't, it's not every student, they're going to make a appropriate.
So, so what happens is that you have, to be eligible, right, you have to have a disability. Then there's, there's other variables we can look at, see if you can apply for Medicaid, but we need to put a consent into that. You're right. Not every child.
So not every child that's on receiving special.
No, no, but you have to, you're right. Thanks for that clarification. But you have to have a disability to, for schools to have to access the ones that are Medicaid eligible. You have to be Medicaid eligible.
So not, yeah, so not.
But there are, but there are, there are individuals, students that can come from very affluent family, but because of the nature of their disability, they can become Medicaid eligible. And then we can secure. So it's a process, it's an educational process. You're right. Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Levis? There's a lot of information, that's for sure. Okay, well, I, I thank you for your presentation tonight. Again, individually, we bet and it was very clear, a half an hour or so that I spent with you. And then, and now it comes down to just how much the town can afford. And I know we'll be meeting in the future too with more questions council members may have, as we work towards our financial accountability. It's coming up sooner than we think. I know that also we have a school presentation as well. I don't know if, unless you have any other questions, alas, we thank you all for coming tonight. And then, who will be doing, Mr. Pearson is going to be doing a school.
Do you want to close?
Okay, before you can close the meeting now, is that your preference?
Yes.
Then why don't you go ahead?
I think we should close the meeting at 6:53.
Okay, so the school committee meeting is officially closed. And Mr. Pearson, if you could make your presentation to us, lay it on behalf of the school department.
Members of the council, they ready or? Uh, it's long, but I'll make it as quick as possible because everybody has a long agenda tonight. And fast approach is up the block if they have a minute already. First thing I want to talk about, on Saturday evening, the Navy Junior ROTC program had their first, as a Navy program, their first military ball. I attended. It was a smashing success. The children were cadets, well behaved and, and I think they're doing our community proud. It's, it's a really good program. Other items we'd like to talk about, Sabrina Pelletier, junior at Coventry High School and our 2017 Coventry High School Science Fair Best of Fair winner, was selected to participate in the Northwest Passage Project. It's a Canadian Arctic research expedition in conjunction with URI and the Interspace Center located at the URI Graduate School of Oceanography. Thank you for the extra syllables, Mr. Levis. Who knows, my mouth is dry. Sabrina will spend two weeks at sea this summer aboard Rhode Island's education vessel, the Oliver Hazard Perry. I don't know if any of you have seen the Oliver Hazard Perry, but it is, it's amazing vessel. Conducting science research, broadcasting information live and being filmed as a part of a documentary. So congratulations to Sabrina. Some business, Coventry Public Schools recently had water samples tested at all of our schools and were pleased to report that all samples came back well below the EPA allowable levels for lead. Several Rhode Island communities have been identified as having issues with the water in their schools. Thankfully, Coventry is not one of them. Superintendent Levis met with the Coventry Director of Public Works to discuss the possibility of creating an internship and potential CTE program for skilled workers and heavy equipment operators. I believe that was referenced earlier. Mr. McGee indicated the average age of the skilled labor force is 56. So this collaboration ties in well with the potential partnership we are establishing with the International Laborers Union. We will be scheduling a follow-up meeting with the high school for early April. Next item, Dr. John Durrell and MSA LLC, which is the former G-Tech building, Route 117. I think many of you have toured that facility already. Is very determined to partner with Coventry Public Schools in numerous ventures relating to STEM initiatives. He is extremely interested in supporting the development of a STEM engineering pathway at our high school. And he discussed applying for grants that support school business partnerships in the area of STEM. In early April, Dr. Durrell will be meeting with the school department representatives and touring our high school. We will be inviting him to future school committee meetings to discuss this partnership. We would like to thank our town manager, Mr. Graham Waters, for inviting us to participate in this exciting development for our community. Hi, the school committee recently adopted a web-based platform called Board Docs. This platform will house all of our school committee agendas, meeting minutes, and policies. A link to Board Docs will be on our homepage and all members of the community will have access to these documents. It's a great feature for transparency and has the ability to search for previous items using keywords. We will begin using Board Docs immediately, but it should be fully operational by the end of June 2017. And finally, the Coventry High School Drama Club was crowned as the Rhode Island High School State Champions at the Rhode Island Drama Festival for their production of The Insanity of Mary Gerro. This is the fifth time Coventry has won this competition. Coventry won an individual award. So congratulations to Mr. Michael Wilkinson and his talented cast. And that is it. Board school committee report.
Any questions of the council? Oh, thank you, Mr. Pearson, for an excellent report. We appreciate all the good news. And again, Mr. Levis and team, I'd thank you for coming on tonight.